City council election, we're in the middle of it right now. Let's dig in.
Next on Loving the Springs, the podcast that celebrates the best of Colorado and Manitou Springs, and strives to elevate the rest.
You're listening to Studio 809 Podcasts. This is what community sounds like.
I'm Al Brody.
And I'm Dave Gardner.
We're coming to you from the Studio 809 Community Podcast Studio at the Next Us, a professional cooperative environment for small businesses in downtown Colorado Springs.
We're recording this episode on March 12th, 2025, and I gotta mention, we're still looking for a third co-host. If you're interested, email us at studio809podcasts@gmail.com.
What are the qualifications?
Well, we do have a DEI policy. We're looking for a third grumpy old man to join us.
So anybody except
A grumpy old man.
An old, old white guy?
Yeah, anybody else, yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Can we actually say that?
I'm staying out of that one.
We would love to have some, some younger perspective for sure.
Diversity, we celebrate diversity.
That's kind of what we're looking for on city council too, right?
Yeah.
Let's welcome to the studio Jan Martin and Jill Gabler, two of, I must say, friends of mine for a very long time. So I'm happy you're here.
Yep, we would invite you in even just on the basis of friendship. You have, in fact, it's an open door. Anytime you want the microphone, say the word, but as it happens, there's many other good reasons to welcome you in here. You know, Al, Jen and Jill are responsible for the initial founding of Studio 809 Podcasts.
Yes.
They hosted the first Studio 809 Podcast City Talk back in 2016, they launched.
Wow, nine years ago.
Yeah, might wanna revive that sometime.
Jill and I go back to 2005, when Jill and her husband contacted me about running for city council. I was running and they said, we like what you have to say, and we're gonna support you, and support they did. So thank you very much for that.
Wow.
And you two are really eminently qualified to comment on the current city council election because you both have served on city council. Let's see, Jill, you represented District Five from 2013 to 2021.
Correct.
Now you are Executive Director of the Pike's Peak Housing Network.
Yes.
And are you still on the Board of the Front Range Passenger Rail District?
I am not.
Oh, no.
We can talk about that.
Okay. Spill the tea on that. Jan, you were at-large city councillor 2007 to 2015. You were on the Board of the Colorado Springs Pioneers Museum until you couldn't be any longer, I think, right?
Yes, exactly.
What about trustee of the Garden of the Gods Foundation, still there?
Yeah, I'm still, still, that may be a lifetime appointment.
Not term limited there.
Right.
Okay, I have to point out a key difference between these two individuals. One is Jan experienced the bridge between the city council, city manager form of government, and the transition to the strong mayor, and Jill did not. And I think that is an amazing difference from my perspective, and I hope to hear what that really means for our city.
It was quite an experience for me too, Al.
I know.
We'll talk about it sometime. Jill was there when the transition was made.
I know she was there, but you were on a dais, so however we pronounce it.
I was there for the four years prior to the transition, then four years after.
That is an amazing time to be in the city because I think it drastically changed the way city council influences policy in this community.
I have another term for it that starts with T R, train wreck.
Funny.
I try to be, that's my job here.
Good job.
I was thinking tariff because that's a common word right now, and some people can look at it as a good thing, and some people can look at it as a bad thing. It's a tool, used properly, it can help. But if you just walk around with Thor's hammer and say, I'm gonna hit everything in my sight to fix it, tariffs are not a great idea.
Yeah, it doesn't promote collaboration. That's the concerning piece for me.
Collaboration, yeah, we could use a lot more of that, couldn't we? Before we jump into the election, you have any tea to spill on anything else?
We had some topics we may wanna talk about after the, we talked about the election, but I don't have any hot topics right now, do you? Your ear is closer to the ground than mine these days.
Oh, give us one, please.
Look at the tip of her tongue. It's calloused. She has to bite her tongue so often.
Let's just see where the conversation takes us and what maybe occurs organically. How's that?
Organically.
I knew I needed to schedule this later in the day and include wine.
Well, I mean, I do have a job and I, I do need to be slightly careful about the, the things I say, and which will kind of spill over since we're talking about spilling tea into this election because I, in my role, can't endorse candidates. The Executive Director at the Housing Network interacts with council a lot on all housing issues, and I need to be able to work with whoever gets elected.
It's one of the things I miss least about city council is I can now speak my mind and not worry about what I say today that'll be in the paper tomorrow.
Amen.
And it's really, it's really freeing not to have that over your head.
We appreciate the things you've said. It's great to have somebody that has a perspective that sat in the arena and knows what it really means to the community.
The difference is if you make a city councillor or a future city councillor mad at you, it doesn't matter because they can't go against the Garden of the Gods.
No, but I'm also involved in the new Fountain Creek project, Monument Fountain Creek project, and it's gonna require everybody pulling together to make that work. And so that includes both utilities in the city. So I'm not out to make anybody mad. It's never been my approach anyway, so, but I can just be a little more free with my comments.
Okay, so let's talk about city council. So we've got, the six districts are all up for reelection, and only in two of them do we have an incumbent. Why don't we start there? So we talk about the incumbents, and we don't need endorsements or voices of opposition, but feel free if you want to, you can go where you wanna go.
Let me just start by saying, because the transition that occurred that Al was referring to was when the strong mayor came in, and at the same time, council districts were changed.
Yeah.
I think we had five districts and four at-large.
You had four districts, five at-large.
Okay.
Boy, it's hard to believe we had that.
Man, that surprises me too.
Way back then.
But it was during that time that we changed to the six districts and three at-large. And the problem with the approach is, so now your elections are every two years. In two years, you have at-large, and then two years later, you have the district races. But the problem is, and we've seen it almost every election since then, is that the district seats, it's, it's possible to have major, major turnovers during the district seat races. And we're probably gonna see that again this year.
Yeah, at least four.
Four seats are vacant, and so it's very likely we'll have four, five, or even six new, new councillors. And the problem with that is people come in very inexperienced, but are gonna come in to save the world. We all, nobody runs unless they really care and wanna make a difference. So they come in to save the world, and sometimes they come in as the majority. And it can make it really difficult to move forward for the first year or so while they get up to speed. We experienced that your first term.
When I came in, in 2013, I was elected with five other new people, so six new council members, and Jan had been on council for six years at that point. And I mean, she tried to hide it, but she was pretty saddened by how we all, you know, took over the council and proceeded to move our agenda forward, and it really wasn't very helpful until we figured out what we were doing. It was tough.
So you're right, Dave, this is a district race. So there are six districts and all those district seats are up for election.
All right, and are we hoping, some of us are free to speak about this.
Yes, I don't have a job to lose.
I'll say this, I'm personally hoping that Nancy Hingem stays on council. I think she's got a good heart, and most of the time I like the way she votes.
So she is my council member. She replaced me on the city council in District Five. She has done a good job. I, working for a housing organization, am really looking for folks who are going to support housing development, production, affordability.
Growth subsidies, yeah.
No, I didn't say anything about that, except maybe for capital A affordable housing. I mean, Nancy has been fairly supportive of housing. I don't know about her opponents and whether they would be any different. It's, it's really hard to tell when someone's running. They tell you all the things you wanna hear. But when you get up on that dais and the pitchforks come out, the medal of an individual is, it's hard to know whether they're going to stand up for principles and what's best for the city of Colorado Springs, or they'll buckle to the pressure, so.
And I don't know anything about her opponents. Jan, you wanna weigh in at all?
I don't know anything about her opponents either, but I've always been a person who, if somebody, she's already served four years, and she has proven, she is as busy and active as anybody I've, I've ever seen since Jill and me in the, in the community, and I really applaud that. She's worked, she's worked so hard, and I think she's done a good job. I don't always agree with every decision she makes either, but that's not the point. You know, and Jill's heard me say this many times, when I was on city council, I had this thing that I always did, and I always tell people that this is how I made decisions. Just before I raised my hand to vote, I would ask myself, what do you think is best for the city? Because I wanted that to be my guiding force. I didn't want it to be, who's the power player that is stressing me to vote their way or anything? My reason for voting was because I wanted what was best for Colorado Springs. And so I looked for candidates that I believe will take that same approach, and I think Nancy does. I do believe that Nancy, her decisions are based upon what she wants for the community.
What about Dave Donaldson, the other incumbent?
I, I don't like chaos. I never did when I was on council, but you know, every council has one or two voices that are sort of out there and who are different than what the majority usually works with. And Dave just happens to be that voice on this particular council. I think there's a place for that. I think everybody deserves to be represented, and he represents a large group of people in the community. So I don't have a problem with it, but it does tend to create chaos where you have somebody who is always taking the opposite position from others.
Yeah, Dave's opponent honestly doesn't seem to be much different. They seem to agree on most issues. So I think on a just person-to-person level, you could vote for either one. I agree with Jan in that he does create some chaos, but it is always good to have one voice who kind of says the things that maybe a lot of us would like to say, but would never say. And they speak up and say those things, and it creates a conversation around an issue that may otherwise not occur.
It's almost like Lorne Michaels was casting city council, making sure there's one maverick.
It is. I mean, there's a, then we had a Bill Murray, and we had a Joe Miller.
We can go all down the line, Tom Gallagher, we, there's all, most councils have one or two who are outspoken, and I don't think it's a bad thing.
And Donaldson is most famous for insisting that city councillors reveal conflict of interest in terms of developer donations to their campaigns when they're voting on land use.
Yes.
Decisions.
I mean, I don't have any issue with the transparency conversation around that issue, but trying to suggest to council members that they should recuse themselves is not his place to do that. Dave's a populist, and so he supports what he thinks the people want, and if you see his signs, they say that. They say, I vote for you. And I mean, that, I think it's likely he'll win because he has focused on issues that the people care about, housing, the library, fighting certain developments in his district, so he'll be tough to beat.
So he's running in District One against Lee Lemkel. I'm actually attending every one of the council candidate forums that are being hosted by the League of Women Voters. I sort of have to because I'm their technical support for that, but I'm glad for that. So that forum has already come and gone, and you can find replays of all of these forums. And by the time you're listening to this, there's probably just one of their forums left. But you can go to l w v p p r dot org and scroll down the homepage and find videos of every one of them or the live stream of any that are coming up.
Today I noticed the Gazette came out with their candidate, they had a whole candidate insert, and with links to their individual debates or forums they had for each district also. So, and they're just videos you can link to, so that's probably a good way also to learn more about.
Did the Gazette endorse?
I don't believe they have yet.
Gosh, but they usually do, I think.
I haven't seen a lot of endorsements. Yeah, they, so they probably will.
I wasn't sure myself about Donaldson because I knew he was a little bit of a disruptor, but I really liked him in this forum, and I also wanna quote to you. I get a daily email from the Colorado Springs Business Journal, and Donaldson's opponent, Lee Lemkel, has been advertising in that daily email every day for quite some time, and I just wanna read what his ad says. Say no to Dave Donaldson, vote Lee Lemkel. Why say no to Dave? Colorado Springs' future is on the line in the 2025 city council election. We need leaders who support responsible growth and a strong local economy, not candidates like Dave Donaldson who stand against thriving business in our city. It's full of these code words. I mean, basically, you know the deal. He's setting himself up as the pro-growth candidate, the pro-growth subsidies. You can count on him to vote yes on every urban renewal project. And Donaldson has already indicated he's a little more cynical and circumspect about doing the developers bidding. He's gonna look more closely at it and not be an automatic yes vote on that stuff. That's my Mr. Anti-Growth.
I live in District One, and I see this as the, the race that I did in 2005. Only I would have been the incumbent, and I wasn't.
Yeah, but you were running against a developer.
But I would be more like, like Dave, and the challenger would have been more like Lee, and it's just reversed, so I'm all about Dave in this election.
I'm in District One also.
Okay.
Not that I'm thrilled with Dave, but
Yeah.
Yeah, given the two choices.
But Lee didn't sound terrible in the forum, and in fact, my observation from all the forums is, so far I haven't seen a terrible candidate yet.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, I don't think there's a nutcase.
No nutters.
Except maybe the ones who haven't shown up.
Fair.
And typically, a lot of the times, the nutcases don't show up.
Are we gonna talk about District Three next?
Let's go, wherever you wanna go. All right, yeah, District Three, kind of a tough one.
But you served with Brandy, so let's start with Brandy.
I actually didn't serve with Brandy. She left as I was coming in, Jan served with Brandy.
I did, I did serve with Brandy, and she was, gosh, it was what, 15 years ago? She was much younger.
Were we all?
Yeah, right, I, yeah.
She still is.
Yeah, she doesn't age.
Very young. I have to tell you, Brandy and I together kind of led the charge for the changeover Memorial Hospital to UC Health. It was like a two- or three-year process that we did, so I worked closely with Brandy going through that. I don't think I've ever worked with anybody who worked harder than Brandy. From early morning till late at night, Brandy was out there making things happen. And I'm a little prejudiced too, but I've always said Colorado Springs natives, born and raised here, have deep roots here, make those good decisions for the city, like I said earlier, and I believe Brandy falls into that category. I thoroughly enjoyed working with her. She's got some experience now too. And as we were talking about possibility of six new council members, bringing Brandy in, who has some experience, would be very beneficial. So I can't say enough good things about the time I worked with Brandy on council.
Yeah, in the forum, the question that was asked in the forum for District Three was, tell us about your endorsements. Took Brandy about 30 minutes to list her endorsements. It really didn't. She went pretty fast, but she has an impressive list of endorsements.
She has the incumbent in Michelle Talarico and our past mayor, John Southers, which, you know, bang.
Usually that's a no vote for me right there, but I know John and I like John, but.
He lives in your neighborhood.
Yeah, but politically, I don't know, not always on the same side of that one. But here's the deal, Mariah Lauer, she is pretty impressive in that forum, you know?
Tell us something about her.
She would be the closest thing we have to Marianne Williamson in the local election. She had a good spirit and seemed like a good heart, and definitely not an automatic yes vote for every new annexation and skyrise in town. So there was a lot to like about her there. Greg Thornton also seemed a little bit of a maverick, good sense of humor.
I've heard that about him.
Is he, he's the one that's on the parks board, right?
Yes.
So he's got some experience being on the parks board.
Yeah, and my only worry with Brandy is that she might be a little bit more pro-development than I would be. She's thoughtful about it, but she works in the growth industry, doesn't she?
She's an engineer and has worked for Fountain and now works for another.
HR Green, I believe.
Yeah, so there's that, but otherwise, there's a lot to like about Brandy. Yeah, Richard Gillett, he was at the forum, and I think he might give Brandy a run for her money, but I think Brandy's got the name recognition.
But what about that last guy?
No idea. He was a no-show.
Oh, he was?
Yeah, what do you know about him? Christopher Metzger.
I mean, he's the one I keep hearing about that he's in the burlesque business or something? And I say that euphemistically.
I like burlesque. What's wrong with that? I'm all for Brandy in this situation, but what's wrong with burlesque?
It's not, again, I use that word euphemistically. I have heard, that's why I was curious if you knew more, that his reason for running to run is to legalize prostitution.
Oh, jeez, wow.
For goodness sakes, I hadn't heard that. I did hear that there were some court dealings though that might long-term impact him, so.
Okay, so Google that guy if you're thinking about him.
Yeah, Google.
Yeah.
His pictures in the paper are all very, very attractive.
Shirt on or shirt off?
Shirt on, shirt on.
You were at the forum, how was that?
He wasn't at the forum.
Oh, he didn't show. That's right.
So District Two, Frank Crissinger and Tom Bailey, I know nothing about them.
Well, I heard that Frank Crissinger dropped out, so Tom Bailey is truly the only one running. And I guess he lives near Randy Helms, who is currently the representative from that district and also the council president, and a really good guy who's kind of moderate about most things. I believe that Mr. Bailey is also an academy grad. They're very similar, similar gentlemen, so he's likely to have that in hand.
That's great. You know, the, that District Two is the northeast part of the city, and that's a lot of new people who, you know, transplants that move into the city move up there because of the price of housing and so on. So sometimes it can be a hard district to represent, but I'm glad to hear that because I didn't know him either.
Yeah.
Now, District Four, that forum, two of the four candidates came to the forum, Kimberly Gold and Chauncey Johnson. And they were both pretty impressive, a lot to like about both of them. Kimberly Gold is, I mean, she's just seems like a kind of an all-star.
Yeah.
She's current president of the Colorado Springs Black Chamber of Commerce and a real go-getter, and whether she wins or not, has real big plans for really pumping up and promoting the Southeast. So I guess that's Yolanda Avila's district.
Yeah, has Yolanda endorsed anybody?
I believe Yolanda was pushing Jeannie Orzoko, who you have listed down here, has dropped out, and so she did drop out. So Yolanda has not endorsed any of them. I have met with Kimberly, and you're right, she's a, she's a go-getter. She's smart, she's articulate. I have heard good things about, I don't, is it Shereah, Sharia?
Not sure.
I've heard good things about her. I mean, she is also articulate, but I don't know much about her.
Yeah, she didn't make it to the forum, so she's a stay-at-home mom and ran for Parisian School Board a few years back.
On the higher level, it's really good to see so many appearing good candidates in District Four. It's usually the district where we can't get anyone to run who even knows about city government. And so this is a really good change. We're seeing people come out.
So I think Kimberly's probably gonna take it. I just hate to see Chauncey Johnson dead-ended because he seems like a good individual.
I think Chauncey will stay in the game somehow.
Yeah, find a way to be plugged in.
Already writing him off. Let's see.
You never know. I mean, what happened to Jane Glenn?
What did happen to Jane Glenn? What happened to Daryl?
Yeah, I haven't missed them. Okay, so that leaves us with District Six, Erin Schick, Roland Rainey Jr., who ran for council in 2023, and Parth Malpakam. Parth is?
He's the board president of School District 11. I know him fairly well.
Okay.
That's all I know him from, and he's the only one I know, and it's really name recognition because of his position as president of District 11 School Board.
And you may not feel comfortable answering this question, is he part of the conservative takeover of that school board?
He is, but I, I really like him. He's a really smart guy who thinks big about things. I think Roland Rainey is also a really good candidate, either one of them. I don't know Erin Schick. Either one of Roland or Parth would be actually a great addition to the council. I did hear that Parth is planning to keep his role as School District 11 Board Chair, which I find a little concerning. I think there could be conflict there, not to mention just the time commitment. So I am curious about that.
Well, wait a minute, council's only a $6,000 a year job, so that's just a couple hours a week.
It's only four meetings a month, right?
And utility support.
Yeah.
One meeting.
So that's District Six, and that's the one forum that when you're listening to this, you still have a chance to go to. So if you live in District Six, the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for that is Tuesday, March 18th, 6:00 PM at the Stetson Hills subdivision of the Police Department, so.
Okay.
You can attend or watch the live stream of that and check them out.
Okay, are we transitioning into another topic?
You sound hopeful.
I am hopeful.
What would you like to talk about, Mr. Brody?
Well, we touched on it, and that touch is shifting from the city manager form of government to the strong mayor. And you two are perfect for addressing this because of your timing on council. I'd really like to know from a wise person who is in the seat, what actually changed and for the good and for the bad? And how should we integrate that knowledge into what's happening in this election?
Everything changed.
That's a good start.
And it surprised me. Scott Henty and I were president and pro temp of the council at that time, and I don't think we even realized how, what a change it would be. Scott and I both wrote a letter, an editorial, that we didn't support it. Concerns of leadership in the community, are we always gonna have somebody who can step up and do this? And it just, putting all the power into one place was a real concern. One of the things, the big change is, previously on the first round, council hired a city manager whose job it was to manage the city. And if that person wasn't doing the right job, then city council could fire them and move on to get somebody else.
But if they were doing a good job, you could keep them for a while.
If they were doing a good job, which we've had some history of, of some long-term managers of the city. Under the new form of government, it runs more like the state legislature, where the legislature actually is a legislative body with the governor of Colorado, who actually runs the state. The legislature set the policy for the state, and that's what the new form of government does. But I'll tell you from a council position in the city council manager form of government, when we were first there, you know, I could, as a council member, somebody called me and said, we've got a five-foot pothole in my alley, and is there anything you can do? Well, I could pick up the phone and call the Public Works Department and say, we need to get this pothole fixed, and they would take care of it. Under the new form of government, council is very limited in when their interactions with city staff, to give direction to city staff. That's really out of our purview at this point. So for me, it was really night and day difference in how I functioned as a council member because initially I had the ability to actually make a difference in the city. And then in, under the new mayor form of government, I lost all that ability to directly work with the city to make changes for citizens who had needs. And yet city council is where they always come. They look to their city council members to be their representatives.
Now, Al's been telling me that council has no power now. It sounds like that's what you're saying, but I don't think that is.
I'm not saying that. Council has power in the budget process, primarily the budget process. It's the same as the state and setting policy, and then the last thing, and big, probably the biggest thing, is land use.
Thank you.
That's where council has the most sway, make those decisions based on land use.
It's interesting to me because, of course, if you look back to who was really pushing the strong mayor form of government, it was several of our largest developers.
Yep.
And as they were changing the charter that we voted on, it's interesting to me that they didn't give more land use authority to the executive. And I don't know if maybe they, they tried, and it was just a bridge too far for the legislative body to not have that ability to speak for the citizens because the executive can't. I mean, that one person, it's not appropriate, but I think that they rue the fact that the council still has that land use authority, and you have to get nine people or at least five of them to support your development project.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it has worked out the way, you know, because I think they wanted to do it so that they didn't have to spend quite as much money on elections, and I don't think it's worked out that well for them.
They were tired of having to work with nine people to make a decision. They wanted one person, one strong person in the seat that they could go to and sway to make decisions versus having to deal with nine council members.
With any powerful industry or influential group of people in a community, you wanna be able to sway the elected officials. So what I saw is they went from the need to influence, I would say buy, but influence, five of the nine versus one who could oversee or overdo or outdo the five. So that was my fear is now you have this powerful person who can run roughshod over city council.
Could veto a land use decision.
Yes, you set the budget.
No.
No?
They can't veto a quasi judicial land decision.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
So it's good to, to hear that there's still some balance in power.
There is. It's just a different way of, of looking at the job, basically. And that's why the transition was difficult because those of us who'd been there prior, it was just hard because we had more control.
And you had more interaction with people who had issues and needs.
Yes, we were really much closer to the public. They would come to us and we would work to help solve problems.
Now, you, not you, but city council members really can't do that. You have to work through the city.
They still try. That's not necessarily a bad thing to have to collaborate with the administration. And when Merv Bennett left council, he was the last council member who had experienced both sides of that. And I remember marking that in my mind, that now everyone was operating under the new form of government. And I came in two years into that and so saw directly how hard it had been on them. And I was watching our current mayor, Steve Bach, he asked me to run. I mean, he was hoping to get friends on there who would support his agenda. And I mean, I realized within a couple of weeks that his agenda was really to have more of an authoritative role over the city government. And the council members were really clawing for some sort of a way to impact that. So I only say that because our next mayor, John Southers, saw how having an executive branch and a legislative branch fighting all the time meant we got nothing done. And so he came in with the whole plan to work with council. And he did. I mean, I was with him six years and we got a lot done because he was very collaborative. When he hired somebody, he would include us on the hiring process. When there was a big issue in the city, he would include several council members as part of the committees or the commissions. But they were more easily able to get things done, especially if you have a strong chief of staff, which he did, who could kind of move the council and work quickly and nimbly to get things done. Our current mayor, I don't think, is as adept at that, so we aren't getting things done again. I don't think it's lack of collaboration. I just think it's wisdom of understanding a political process. So your city lives or dies by that executive.
And that was always one of my concerns, was we put our city in the hands of one individual for four years at a time.
It was really unfortunate that Steve Bach was the first strong mayor because he set a pretty bad precedent. And kudos to John Southers for coming in and showing us how it can be done. He's had a long career in politics, a lot of political experience, so he was better at managing that whole thing. I like Mayor Yemi. I think he's got a good heart and a good spirit and has a lot of good things on his agenda, but maybe he isn't as adept at, maybe he doesn't invite enough people to lunch at the El Paso Club or something.
City government isn't easy. I used to always say it takes two years for council members to really get up to speed. They need to go through a full cycle to really understand all the ins and outs. And someone like Mary Yemi, who came in with no political experience at all, it's just not easy. And it takes time. And it's, it'll be interesting to see, this is, how long has he been?
Two years.
So this will be the two-year mark.
Yeah. And the last thing I want to rant about very briefly is that this new form of government, the train wreck form, now every time you elect a new mayor, they're going to bring in their own chief of staff. So it's like changing city managers every four years instead of having any kind of institutional memory and keeping somebody who's really good at it. So if they're smart, they appoint a chief of staff who has a lot of city management experience, but that's not necessarily gonna happen. So I think we, it hurts us there.
And I think the one thing we haven't talked about is utilities and how this change has impacted utilities. And the mayor is an ex officio board member. But in my experience, they mostly abdicate that role except when big issues come up. And there's such a need for collaboration around land use and utilities. And we're seeing that now with the water issues. So I hope that they can figure out how to work really much closer so that we can grow well.
Speaking of water issues, could you give us an update on what Southern Delivery System is doing for us?
I really don't know the latest numbers as far as like how much it's bringing up. I know, you know, they created the storage place out east and I don't know how full it is. I really don't have any good numbers on that. So I imagine by that statement, you're suggesting we should never have invested in, because I, I think.
That's what I ran on, was not, not buying the Southern Delivery System.
Okay.
Having water is great in the West, but pumping water 1,600 feet vertically uphill is a very foolish thing to do by any standard. And I believe, and you can check me on this, that it is the most foolish water project in the history of mankind on the planet.
I imagine it's gonna be eclipsed any day now, though.
I imagine, I can't imagine it's the most foolish.
Well, as far as moving the water, now whether there's a need for it, that's another story.
I mean, at least it's in a pipe where, I mean, in California, we just run them in open areas that half of it evaporates. So I would argue all sorts of more foolish kinds of ideas, but.
And I have a question. And Dave, I know you and I've had conversations about this too. But what was the alternative to stop growth?
Yeah, because you know what? If you aren't growing, you're dying.
So.
OMG. Well, the alternative.
People want to live here. We can't roll up the drawbridge.
Well, if we can't connect their new home to water, then they may have to choose somewhere else to live. That's hard to imagine.
That won't happen. Water rates will just skyrocket as home rates are now starting to because we're not building to meet the demand for our community. And most of the growth is happening between the 17 and 24-year-olds, so young people, and 70 to 85-year-olds. So those people are already living here. We need to find housing for them.
So they asked a question, and I would like to answer the question.
And they need to drink water.
Pueblo West was platted for growth. Pueblo West is where the water is that we're bringing here. It's a transportation issue. You can either move the people or you can move the water. And we chose to move the water. We can also double the utility of the water that we have by limiting grass.
That's a great idea. And we're doing that.
But we're not. I mean, go look at the communities and.
Utilities has some really great rebates, and they're just starting one for affordable housing where they'll give you a $2 rebate per square foot if you implement low water use types of design for landscaping. So I would say, I mean, our utilities is doing everything they can. And if you have seen since the pandemic, a huge number of our citizens have taken out their grass because they are realizing this and the utilities is incentivizing that change.
They're not as aggressive as many other front-range communities about it, but for Colorado Springs, they're making steps.
They aren't as aggressive as maybe some of us would like. I remember particularly when I was on the utilities board, an issue came up about commercial, when new commercial buildings were being built and why was there a need for all the grass at commercial buildings? And so we brought forward to require different landscaping for commercial buildings. Well, you know, we live in a city that doesn't want any government influence on particularly developers and new buildings. And it just, it never got legs. There was no way to push it forward. So we aren't as aggressive. But I am always pleased to see that they are coming up with some policies now that tend to work towards that direction.
And actually, the state level is forcing it too. So it is beginning to happen.
I just, this past weekend, a little late in the game, but I started killing a big section of turf in my front yard that I'm gonna replace with native grass. And I'm gonna get, if I play my cards right, I'll get some free seed from utilities for doing that. I won't get a lot of help. Yeah. But here's something controversial. Maybe Norwood Development's gonna wanna sponsor our podcast because I'm gonna say something really nice about Norwood and Chris Jenkins. You know what? They were smart enough to buy Banning Lewis Ranch. Okay, there's enough undeveloped land in Banning Lewis Ranch, which the city annexed a long time ago.
In the eighties.
And Southern Delivery System could have probably provided water for all of that if we didn't keep annexing other places and growing in other places, but we keep doing that. And one of the reasons that we keep doing that is because people don't think it's fair for all of the new housing developments and commercial developments to be Norwood. Okay, so you know what? Norwood was smart enough to get Banning Lewis Ranch, and we have a limited amount of water. I say, you know what? That was a business decision. They put up the money. We shouldn't be annexing more land when we do not have the water to meet the needs of that other land. We had the water to meet the needs of Banning Lewis Ranch. We have somewhat of a commitment to hook them up. We should go with that.
In 1988, we annexed Banning Lewis Ranch, 18,000-plus acres, the size of Manhattan. And because of that, the pressure placed on the city council got the Southern Delivery System approved.
Yep.
It was for Banning Lewis Ranch. So as far as I know, you have to pump 5 million gallons a day or the pipe doesn't work. You can't just pump what you need.
Oh, that's.
You must, because pipes only work when they're full. You can't flow half a pipe.
Gotcha.
It only works between pumps.
Can't you pump it full for 12 hours a day and then turn it off?
Sure.
Okay.
But you have a minimum. The pipe's gotta be full. I don't wanna get into techno details. But we just keep pumping. We'll always pump. And we take credit for hydro, which is when you take advantage of water going downhill. This is anti-hydro. This is, you should be penalized for pumping the water back uphill.
Well, and we are because we have to generate that electricity or pay for that electricity.
We do.
Yeah. All right. I see Jill looking at her watch.
No, I was just looking. I don't have any commitments.
Okay. I wanna make sure that we cover everything you.
Yes.
Just to finish that annexation, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. And there have been several controversial annexations as this council has not approved over the last several months. And Norwood has fought both of those because they technically have a monopoly on all future growth at this point. So that's the negative kind of push on it. I'm not against annexation. I just think it should be logical growth. And the annexations that have been brought forward most recently are kind of the leapfrog types of growth where it would cost utilities, it would cost the city so much money to try to provide services and infrastructure to those areas. So I'm not against annexation, but those were both very complicated. And, and I am sensitive to one developer having the ability to provide all the future housing in our community.
Well, that's unfortunate, but he wrote the check.
So Norwood, let's sponsor the podcast, please. We're all about you. Woo, woo.
Give me a call, Chris. At least buy me lunch.
So I just have to share my perspective, where it comes from. New York City. I grew up in New York City. In the 20 years or so that I was there, at least part-time, we never annexed any land. It was the city. And we had one school district for 8 million people.
It was kind of, it was almost like living in Europe.
Well, it is the most transit-used city in America. And if we're going to build a city, then if you keep annexing land, we prove time and time again that we do not have the resources to keep up with the roads. And the roads are getting more and more complicated. The, the technology that's going into roads is fantastic. It's just really expensive. You're not just paving a street anymore. You're putting in electronic equipment and AI and all sorts of things to make sure that street functions. And we just keep building more and more where we can't maintain what we have.
Right. I say that a lot, which supports infill development, trying to densify your community.
Which brings us to another topic, if I could. Just one more quick topic. You all probably read recently about the study that was done or is being done on North Nevada. Between Fillmore and Garden of the Gods Road, there's a section there that, I grew up here in the 50s, and it looks exactly like it did when I grew up here in 19.
The Roman villa.
But Nama Ho Hogan. In 1950, when I grew up here, there were 40,000 people in Colorado Springs. And there was no interstate. So the main thoroughfare through town was Nevada Avenue.
That's where they drove all the cattle and the wagon trains.
It was the entrance in and the entrance out of the city. And that was the reason for all those motels up there, was it was where people came. We were still a tourist destination. People would come, and that's where they would stay, is in those motels. It's amazing to me that that piece of that corridor has not changed. And all those, and our, our current population is over 500,000. We went from 40, 500,000 and that, that corridor has not changed at all.
Yeah, it is hard to believe, hard to believe.
That's because we poured the energy into Powers and now Mark Scheffel and the North, which it's part of Colorado Springs because we annex everything. But it's hard to think that that is Colorado Springs.
I was talking to my daughter about that North Nevada thing just the other day. And I said, "It's great as long as it's not just another strip center. We do not need another university village, you know? We need something smarter to happen along North Nevada."
What's wrong with university village?
It's very car-centric. Oh, look at you.
It's on a bike trail.
It wasn't planned to be how it came out. It was supposed to be much more walkable inside of the village. They do have the underground tunnel from UCCS, which is, is actually really nice.
I use it.
But once you're there, it's very car-driven.
So it shops at Briargate. So tell me the difference.
Well.
Well, you get out of your car, it shops at the Briargate, and then you walk.
Do you watch people at shops at Briargate? They move their car.
I, I've never once moved my car.
But university village, that's right next to a college campus.
Right.
It provides a lot of jobs.
It could be like Pearl Street.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. And instead, I mean, have you ever walked from Costco to Lowe's? I mean, that's a trip.
I have, but yeah.
Hey, thank you for doing that.
And I'll ride my bike to Costco from my house with my poneers, but I'm a rarity.
Bless you, Jill.
And we're doing a lot of work on Monument and Fountain Creeks. And our, our vision is, instead of, you know, when we develop along the North Nevada corridor, our tendency has always been to turn our back to the creek because there is nothing there. If we can create some vitality within the creek, clean it up and get it to where it's actually a workable creek in the city, then it's time for us to, as we develop, to turn around and face the creek and use it as an amenity in the city. And that includes the trails and the parks and all that goes with it.
So a little piece of information, I brought the term complete streets to this community. I didn't come up with it, but I did come up with complete creeks. So if you've heard that term, that was my extension of complete streets. I said, "We should think about complete creeks."
Keep that in mind in your work, Jen.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting.
Looks like a good term.
The study that was presented a week or so ago for North Nevada is very broad. And it includes technology expansion of like the cybersecurity area up there. But they also talked a lot about birdsall needing to be replaced. And the greyhound dog track is right there. There's lots of space there. And they talked a lot about affordable housing and the need that that would be a good spot to create a neighborhood feel with affordable housing. There's over 1,000 units of mobile homes back behind there. Did you, did you know that? I, I guess I was surprised at that, and they recommend it stays.
So those mobile homes and all those motels, those are affordable housing. So it would be great if we didn't just try to move them.
Yeah, exactly.
Because too often our development is, oh, this is blight. Let's move it. Let's get rid of it. Well, where does it go?
It's naturally occurring affordable housing.
Yeah. We could spruce that up.
They had some really interesting ideas.
Yeah.
And, and it's a pretty, you know, big area. So there's lots of potential there for that. And when we talk about infill versus more annexation, it's an opportunity again for the community to come up with some ideas and ways to use that property in a, in a good way.
You mentioned the trails. There's, I mean, there's one that comes across from St. Mary's High School over there, and, and then of course, north-south. And, and trying to integrate all that so that you have mixed-use housing and other places people can visit. And I mean, there's not even sidewalks on Nevada.
Right.
But there is a great bike trail right there. So it'll be very bikable, which is.
I bike to University Village all the time. It's actually how I get to the trail. I use it. So to stop at a restaurant there or stop at Lowe's or stop at Costco, Costco and bicycles don't really go well together.
And there's not a bike rack there. I have to.
Yeah, we gotta fix that.
Have to fix that.
So, so a plug for the creek work that you're doing, Jan, you were just on the Peak Environment Podcast.
Yes.
An episode or two ago, talking about the Colorado, what do you call it? The Colorado Springs?
It's, well, it's the COS Creek Plan.
Right.
So is the visionary document. And then we've created a nonprofit that is sort of leading the charge, and that's called Pike's Peak Waterways.
So we'll put a link to that podcast in the show notes, but you can just look up Peak Environment Podcast and an episode or two ago, Jen filled us in, and that sounds pretty cool. Jill, do you have a project you wanna plug?
Well, Pike's Peak Housing Network just released its inaugural State of Housing Report for 2024. It's on the website. I could link it to you. But it provides a lot of great data on why housing is needed in our community, what types of housing are needed for the demographics that are living here, and what we can do to advocate for housing, which may or may not be something you agree with. But in my opinion, the people are coming, and I wanna make sure they can afford to live here.
I agree with you on more than you think, except the people are coming. Well, the people will keep coming if we keep interfering with the market to make it possible for them to come. And most people think we need to do that because if we're not growing, we're dying, apparently. How we're gonna grow forever, especially in the water-limited American West, I would love for somebody to tell me how.
I hear you tapering off a bit here, but we would be remiss if we didn't ask each of you, "Why do you love the Springs?" I hear you tapering off a bit here, but we would be remiss if we didn't ask each of you, why do you love the Springs?
Okay, they're stumped. We gotta wrap it up. No, just kidding.
My family roots run really deep here. My mother was born in Cripple Creek, actually. So I go back a few generations and I've seen it from when it was at 40,000 people to where today it's at 500,000. There's just nothing like Colorado Springs. It was a wonderful place to grow up. It still is. These views of the mountains, I happen to live on the west side and I have a view of Pike's Peak that is different every day, every day of my life. I look at that mountain and I get a new, fresh view. It, it's the people. You know, I was always accused of when I was on council of being a liberal Democrat, which is as far from the truth as it could be. But I want a city that cares about the people that live here. And if that means I'm a liberal Democrat, then so be it. And I think Colorado Springs does. We have generally been that. Whenever we have a tragedy, you'll see the best of our city come out, the people, the heart and soul of the community. So I love it here. My whole family has moved away from Colorado Springs and I made a personal choice that I was going to stay. I cared about this city. And if I was going to stay, I wanted to be a part of making it a good place to live.
So since you started, do you have a secret spot that you hide or go to to relax and contemplate?
Huck's Cove.
I've been very involved with the Garden of the Gods for many years and I'm president of the foundation now. So Garden of the Gods is where I go.
Okay. Thank you.
It's hard to top Jan Martin. I've lived here for 25 years now, so longer than anywhere else I've lived in my life. And Matt and I talk about, you know, do we want to stay here? Do we want to retire somewhere else? And I just can't imagine leaving Colorado Springs and, and instead I'm trying to keep my kids here or ensure that they come here. There is something about, as you both know, the proximity to the mountains that of course is very special here. And you don't have that in many places in the state of Colorado, unless you're in a much smaller town, that's more of maybe a resort type of town. And so we, there's something for everyone here. I mean, I live in closer to the downtown and I often say that it's a big, small town, but I mean, I can go anywhere and run into people that I know. There's something for everyone, whether it's the downtown, it's the north part of town, the more of the military type of environment. And I, it's just a beautiful place to live. The only other place I can imagine living is La Jolla. And it's out of my price range. So and California is just trouble right now. So I just love Colorado. I can't imagine living anywhere else. And when I really need to get away, I go to Palmer Park, which doesn't seem, I don't know, maybe the best answer because it's very popular and there's all sorts of crazy going on in Palmer Park. But it's also, I mean, this urban, beautiful open space where you can just feel like you're in the middle of nowhere, but you're right in the middle of the city.
Yeah. One of the best views from up there too. When Al asked me what I love about Colorado Springs, you know what I say?
You said me, of course.
No, Jan Martin and Jill.
Convenient.
It would break my heart to lose either of you. So thank you for, thank you for sticking around.
Really sweet, really sweet.
Well, I always appreciate getting your emails and asking us back. So thank you. And it lets me see her too.
Yeah. Any excuse for that. So what else did you hope to chat about when you came in? We can stick around for another five minutes if you want.
You had notes, did you have?
I don't think there's any other hot topic that we couldn't do some other time.
We don't need to talk about this now, but I mean, I think a good conversation is she mentioned how ULI came to town to talk about North Nevada. Again, there just seems to be all of these different groups popping up that are having these big visionary plans. There's one called Spacious Skies, which the community foundation is leading to try to envision, you know, what do we want to become? And then there's another one called Peak Cities, I believe. Is it Peak Cities?
Oh, yes.
That is meant to be the second City for Champions type of
Oh, boy.
A visionary planning of what do we want to do next? Now that we have completed City for Champions and what projects and where the funding come from. And so I, I'm seeing all these things pop up suddenly. And so there's a lot going on in this community and there's a lot of people who have ideas about how we should grow, what's important, you know, tourism versus military.
One of the things that came out of the ULI study too, was how much we love to plan around this. That there are more plans.
Are we unique?
They, a little bit.
How funny.
And, and they said, they commented on the number of plans that we have sitting on shelves around this community. So talking about all these plans that are ongoing right now, there is some truth to that. When times are good and we think we can get some resources, then we, we tend to go on another planning spree.
It sounds like we're going to have to have you back fairly soon because those are some things I hadn't heard about. But as for the planning, it's kind of like making it to do list and never looking at the list after you make the list. I do want to make sure people know, we're going to put in the show notes, some great places to get more information about voting because you gotta vote. April Fool's Day, let's say, is about the last time that you can put your ballot in the mail. If you wait till after that.
Now, April Fool's Day is election day, so you can't put your ballot in that day.
Not in the mail.
April 1st.
April Fool's Day is election day. Isn't that crazy?
Isn't it a week later?
No, it's April 1st.
OMG.
So you can drop it off on that day, but you don't mail it.
Okay.
Don't mail it.
You gotta go back a week. So it's coming up fast, folks.
Couple of weeks away.
If you're gonna, like me, you're going to be dropping it in that ballot box. So where are those? If you don't already know, you can go to coloradosprings.gov/elections. And it's a little hard to find, but there's a place where you can click on ballot box locations and find the location of your ballot box. And in fact, you can even, there's a link, you can actually watch live video streaming of all of the ballot boxes.
You have too much time, Dave.
Oh, look at that truck backing up to that ballot box. And what are they dumping in that ballot box?
I looked. He got me to look.
Anyway, if there's nothing on Netflix tonight, just watch the ballot boxes.
Intriguing.
All right, let's wrap it up, Al. I want to thank you all for listening to Loving the Springs and thank you, Jan Martin and Jill Gabler for being here. What fun. What fun.
Yes, it was.
Be sure to follow this podcast to keep up on.
What's going on?
What's going well.
And what could use some improvement?
Share it with your friends, family and colleagues.
And be sure to visit studio809podcast.com to check out the amazing lineup of community podcasts. Think globally, listen locally.
And we'll catch you next time.
In the Pike's Peak region, there's no shortage of activities, whether you're experiencing breathtaking parks or magnificent works of art. If you're getting fashionable at a film festival or fresh at a farmer's market. If you want to hear the sweet sounds of a symphony or the smooth shred of a Stratocaster, look no further than Peak Radar. Your one stop shop for all events in the Pike's Peak region, your free source for viewing and posting events. So no matter how you engage with our beautiful region, visit peakradar.com and get plugged into the peak.